Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday, June 24th, meeting of the Board of Commissioners in Rockdale County. We're glad to have everyone present today. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we will open our meeting today with an invocation. And if you'll join me in prayer, our pastor that was going to speak today had a family emergency, so please keep Pastor Charlotte Hill in your prayers at this time if you'll bow your head and join me. Dear Father in heaven, thank you for this glorious day and the opportunity to serve the citizens and businesses of Rockdale County. Lord, I thank you for my colleagues here today and for the team that we have in Rockdale County that are committed to the citizens. Lord, we lift up all the businesses and pray for their ability to thrive in this economy. And Lord, let us be useful to you and your plan. It's in your name. Amen. Thank you. If you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a presentation this morning, the audit of annual comprehensive financial report. Go ahead to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning to the Commissioners. My name is Wondellin Wright and I'm a partner with Banks, Finley, White &amp; Company. And we were engaged to audit the county's annual comprehensive financial report or ACFA for the year ended December 31st, 2023. And I'm here to present the results of that audit. So yeah, I think we have the, my slide presentation on the screen. So what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about the scope of the audit or what we were engaged to do, then talk about the audit objectives or the point or why we did what we did, then get into what our respective responsibilities are under the audit, Banks, Finley, White &amp; Company as your independent auditors versus the management of Rockdale County. Talk a little bit about the reports we issued and give you a summary of those audit results and then conclude by talking a little bit about the, what's known as the management representation letter. So just as an overview, the annual comprehensive financial report or ACFA, I'll say ACFA, is broken up into several sections. You have your introductory section, which is just gives general information about the county, your financial section, which contains the actual financial statements of the county along with our independent auditor's report and what's known as the management's discussion and analysis. So let me talk a little bit, the management discussion and analysis, I'll say is really good to read as it gives a summary of the financial statements. And along with that summary, it gives some, some discussion or provides discussion on why the numbers are what they are, what the changes are in comparison to the year before. So if, if the financial statements themselves are, are a bit too technical, the management's discussion and analysis is an abbreviated or summarized version of those. Then you have the required, what's known as required supplementary information, some schedules, pension schedules that are required to be included in the ACFA but are not actually financial statements. You have other supplementary information, which is just a reporting of what's considered non-major funds of the county. You have your compliance section on the federal programs. And then wrapping up the, the ACFA is the statistical section. So as far as what we were engaged to do, so we were engaged to and audit it what's known as the governmental activities, business type activities, component units, each major fund, non-major fund information, and the budget to actual general fund, budget schedule. That's what we were engaged to audit for December 31st, 2023. And those are known as the basic financial statements. So as part of the audit, we audited the financial, as part of this whole engagement, we audited the financial statements. But we also took a look at that required supplementary information or RSI. We did not render an opinion on the RSI. And when I say RSI, I'm talking about that management's discussion and analysis. We didn't audit it, but we made sure that it is consistent with the financial statements and tie into the financial statements that we did audit. So audit objectives. The audit objectives, why we do what we do, the objectives are to take a look at the financial statements, audit the financial statements and making a determination whether or not those financial statements are free from material misstatement and issue an opinion to that fact. We also provide a report on internal control over compliance over the financial statements. And so those, that report, that internal control report over, over the financial statements, just, it's just us reporting on whether or not there were any findings related to the county's compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements that could have an impact on the financial statements. And then we issued a, we issued a report, a report on internal control and compliance over what's known as major federal programs. So in order to complete the audit, there are responsibilities that, that we have as internal auditor, as external auditors, independent auditors, as well as responsibilities that the management of Rockdale County has. So our responsibilities as your independent auditors are to make sure that we conduct our audit in adherence to the applicable auditing standards. And so those auditing standards in this case are generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and what's known as the uniform guidance. It is our responsibility to exercise professional judgment, always maintain an attitude of professional skepticism throughout the audit. It is our responsibility to make sure we perform a proper risk assessment, determine those areas where we think there may be the greatest risk for misstatement in the financial statements and non-compliance, and then design our audit to respond to those risks. It is our responsibility to make sure we obtain a proper understanding of the county's internal controls that are relevant to the financial statements and relevant to its adherence to compliance with federal, federal grant terms. We evaluate whether or not certain accounting policies are appropriate under the circumstances and then make a conclusion based on our judgment whether or not there are conditions or events that would lead to what's known as going concern issues. And so going concern, going concern issues just mean whether or not we believe that the county can operate into the foreseeable future. And foreseeable future in this instance means about a year past the financial statements that we are auditing. So in contrast, Rockdale County's management's responsibilities for the financial, are for the financial statements. They are responsible for making sure the financial statements are prepared under what's known as generally accepted accounting principles. They are responsible for the, for the, the financial statements, the preparation of those financial statements, and the internal controls. They are responsible for designing a system of internal controls that facilitate the, the fair presentation and the correct presentation of those financial statements. Management of Rockdale County is responsible for designing and implementing internal controls to make sure that the county is complying with all of the, the terms of any grant requirements that they have. And then as an overview, we issued three different reports. And so if you look in your annual comprehensive, in the financial statements, you'll see three reports from us. The first report is a report on the financial statements. That's where we issue our opinion about whether or not the financial statements are presented in, in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. So that I think is on pages one through four of, of the report. And then closer to the end of the report, you have our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And then you have finally our third report on the compliance over federal programs. So pages one through four, that independent auditor's report that, that you see is where we give our opinion on whether or not the statements are, like I said, in conformity with GAAP. And we issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And an unmodified opinion is, is the, is the best opinion that an independent auditor can issue over financial statements, which means that we're just saying that those statements that you have behind that report are, are not materially, in our opinion, not materially The, we also discuss in that independent auditor's report that required supplementary information, the MDNA, the pension and OPEB information. Like I said, we performed some procedures just to make sure that it is consistent with the, with the financial statements and we don't express an opinion on, on that. And then on pages 118 and 119, if you flip, that is our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And so that report would discuss any deficiencies that we came across when it comes to internal controls over financial reporting and whether or not there was any non-compliance with grants, contracts, grants or contract agreements. So we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, which is good. And then those tests did not, did not disclose any instances of non-compliance that we would have to report in the report or to you. And then that third report on pages 120 through 122, that is our report on compliance over federal programs or what's known as a single audit. The county complied with the, with the compliance requirements that, that have a direct and material effect on any major programs. And we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls over compliance over, over those federal programs that we audited. And so summary of auditor's results, there, in the single audit section, there should be a schedule of findings and question costs. That's where everything is summarized. And so like I said, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, no significant deficiencies over financial reporting, no significant deficiencies that we would have to disclose to you or tell you or rose to the level of what's known as a material weakness or material weakness. And then we did not find any material non-compliance over the financial statements. As far as the federal awards programs, when it comes to internal controls, we did not identify any significant deficiencies. We did not identify any material weaknesses. We issued an unmodified opinion on all of the federal programs that we audited. And then we did not have any question costs or any costs that we found to be disallowed, disallowed and would have to potentially be repaid back to federal state agencies. So the major programs that we audited for 2023, you have your asset forfeiture program, coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery funds, some, some COVID era funds, and then highway planning and construction. Those are the, the federal programs that we audited for 2023. The county is considered to be a low-risk oddity, which just means that there were no findings in the previous two years that, that were required to be reported. And really just for our purposes, that means that, that low risk enables us to audit a lower percentage of the total federal expenditures, just because you hadn't had any problems in the past. So asset forfeiture program, coronavirus, fund money, and highway planning and construction, again, were those programs that we audited. No financial statement findings. And then again, no, wanted to reiterate, no, no question costs. And then finally, that we have the management representation letter. So the management representation letter is a part of the audit. We are required to get that letter from management, management signs off, finance signs off on that letter. And basically what that management representation letter is meant to, to convey to us is their affirmation that they indeed fulfilled all of their responsibilities for designing effective internal controls. They, they completed and prepared the financial statements accurately. Everything is included. Nothing is left out of the financial statements. They, they have no knowledge of any fraud or if there were some fraud in, in, in this case, they would have reported it to us. If there were any risk to the county, they would report, they are affirming that they reported it to us or that there were no, no risk that they were required to report to us. So, and then that letter comes back to us. We retain it as part of the audit and enables us to ultimately release the report. So that's it as far as the, the financial statements go. It was a, what's known as a clean audit, no findings, unmodified opinion. And so if there are any questions, I will, I will take, I will try to answer them for you.
It's awesome. It's always good to get a good financial report.
It is.
So do you have a letter of recommendations in there of best practices or any changes that need to be made?
No. And I want to be, I want to be careful on what I say. We don't have any. I'll say that. I'll start off by saying we don't have, we don't have that. We, we take a look at internal controls for the purpose of designing the, you know, designing our audit procedures. And so we don't issue an opinion on whether or not, you know, internal controls are good or bad. But if there were some, some, some issues that came up that we felt like, you know, were opportunities for improvement, we would report those. And then there are certain.
But there's none to report.
That we don't have any to report for 2023.
All right. And then for our grant, the grants that we had, during your process, do you look and make sure of expenditures matching revenue that's requested from the agencies?
That is, that is part of the procedures. So, and I want to say, we don't necessarily look at every federal program just in, for 2023. The ones that I mentioned are the ones that we looked at.
So I guess this would be the best way to put it. If we had a grant for $8 million, do you assess and make sure that we were funded properly for the expenses we incurred?
We look at the, at the expenses. And so the, the audit of the compliance of the federal program, we are mainly looking at what you receive, the, the revenue or income that you receive from those grants and how you expended the funds that you did expend in that.
But I think most of the time that we have the expenses and then get funded later, reimbursed. So do you look at that during the process?
We, we do. That is part of, that plays into, I guess, the financial accounting side of it. But we do, the short answer is we do look at that. But when it comes to the actual compliance, we're not looking so much at what they gave you and whether or not, and the timing of when they gave it to you. We're more looking at how you made sure you spent it, you know, correctly.
So an $8 million grant, you would look at the expenses, but there would be no balance to ensure revenues were received to cover the expenses, correct?
We would look at, if you expended it under that program, we are looking at whether or not you comply with the terms of the grant. And we are, we would look at whether or not you received, you received the reimbursement. That's part of the internal controls that we're looking at. We will look at it.
All right. And when, when would we expect the 2024 audit?
The 2024, we are working on drafting the report now. So I anticipate in the next day or two, we'll be getting a draft over to finance before the final sign-off ahead of June 30th, the June 30th.
And why was the 2023 audit so late?
I can't really.
Speak tonight?
Yeah, I can't really speak to it.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other?
No, thank you. No, I think we're good. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have guests from the Rockdale County Chamber of Commerce here with some information they'd like to share.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting us.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. I'm Katie Zerodnik. I'm president of the chamber and this is Toya Tab. And we have a program that we are very proud of. We've, it's been in existence for about 20 years, probably if not the only chamber in the state, one of very few that offer this. And this is the Entrepreneurial Academy. And we are kicking off another class in September. And it's a bargain, $125. And it's a seven-week course. Leading this effort is, if you know Steve Brummel, he does everything with excellence. So he's a big chamber member and supporter. So he leads this effort. Toya is our staff person in charge of it. And it's, it's really for entrepreneurs of all levels. So if you have a dream, you just kind of want to figure out how to put that on, make it into reality, or you've just started, or you're already in business. Steve really preaches that you always need to nurture your dream, no matter where you are in your entrepreneurship. So yeah, so Janice asked me, Chairman Venez asked me to come today to share a little bit about that. So Toya's going to speak a little bit to the actual programming, what some of the topics that we offer. And please note that they are all taught by entrepreneurs themselves. So these aren't, aren't professors coming in. These are street smart business people. And we vet them very well and they come in and teach this program. So with that, Toya?
Thank you. So we'll have several classes going over items such as marketing, financing, AI, as well as local resources within the community and with the state that the businesses have access to, and a variety of courses, expanding on that as well.
Doesn't the small business development count, person come once a week?
So he is in our, yes, that's a separate, but yes, we have a partnership with the Small Business Development Council from the University of Georgia. They, that is a free service. They take appointments and they're in our office. We give them space and they're there every Wednesday. So I encourage everyone to take advantage of that. They, if Ryan or we have Ryan and Candace in our office, if they don't have the, the answers, they have a resource, they have lots of resources to, to help pretty much at any topic level.
And they're a big help whether you're thinking of starting your own business, you are looking to grow your business, or just need additional capital.
We have lots of testimonials.
They can also talk about financing options, correct?
Yes, all of that, yes.
And can you give us information about phone number, email, and location of your, of the chamber?
Sure. We are located right in Old Town, 936 Green Street, Suite 100. And our phone number, 770-483-7049. Our website is Conyers-Rockdale.com. And all of this can be found. You can, I believe, can, can you register online or?
Yes.
Okay, you can register online.
And I know you have limited slots. So when is the deadline?
September 8th.
September 8th. But because you have limited spots, the earlier the better?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So is it open to anyone or just members of the people who are already members?
Anyone. Really, the majority of our, our folks that come through are not members yet. So, yes.
After they start their business.
That's right. So, and we do, we have folks that come through that literally they think, they think they're ready. They come through, they're like, you know what, I need a little more time. So, and that helps them not invest too early before they're ready and blow their, you know, savings. So.
Well, I see that program as a great asset in Rockdale County because so many people think about opening a business. And I'll use the example of the baker who bakes everybody's cakes in town. And then they, everybody says, oh, you should open a bakery. Well, the bakery owner forgets that they buy one cake a year and that doesn't necessarily cover all your expenses. So I think the beauty of the Entrepreneurial Academy is that somebody actually is there with you to help you think about things like that before you invest. And so make sure you have good guidance.
Exactly. Exactly. And also one more thing, on our website, we have a pretty comprehensive how to start and run a business in Rockdale County. So you guys at the county, like you may not know this, but have been very helpful in helping us update that from year to year. It tells you how to get your license, some, some things to think about, things like that. So that's also another resource. My predecessor, Fred, used to tell me that, you know, a lot of people, a lot of chambers run, you know, their business, but helping entrepreneurs isn't sometimes one of those offerings sadly. But we, we do that in Rockdale County. So very proud of that.
Well, it's definitely something this board is passionate about is not just starting, you know, having people start a business, but making sure they have support along the way and resources available. And so I know is you and I have gone out meeting different business owners in our community that there's a lot of questions about, we want to expand our business, you know, what resources are available. And so in collaboration with Georgia Power, we've been able to talk about some really great incentive opportunities and funding options. So that's been, I think, a helpful tool in our community. And with Director Gardner from Planning and Development, we are committed to excellence in customer service. And so we hope that it will be a smooth process along the way.
We appreciate the partnership, open communication. So yes, however, we can support you guys with new folks coming in and vice versa. So we appreciate that partnership. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming out today. I appreciate that.
Yes, we have to skip, but thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comments today?
I have not received any cards this morning.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, we'll move on with the approval of the agenda. Okay, very good. All right, well, we'll move on with the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as amended to remove items 2025-304 and 2025-305 at the request of the sheriff's office.
Okay, thank you for that.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
All right, I have a motion and a second of the amended agenda, um, presented. And so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. I need an approval of the minutes from June 10.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And we don't have any unfinished business, so Madam Clerk, we will move on to new business.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. And if it pleases the board, I will take some of these collectively this morning until I am stopped. How about that? Okay.
That would be great.
Item 281 is with North America Fire Equipment Company, NAFCO, through the Fire Rescue Department. For fire protective clothing, it's a unit price as needed basis. This is for one year with option to renew three additional one-year terms. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 282 is with Gerard Gunther through the Parks and Recreation Department for the Summer Concert Series. The amount is five thousand dollars. The day is July 27th, 2025. This is at the lawn at Wheeler Park. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 283 is with McCarthy Barnsley, a joint venture through the General Services Department for the Judicial Administrative Complex. This is change order number six to contract 2023-149. This is a time extension due to the impacts of the groundwater, rain and unforeseen conditions. It's at seventy-seven days and no cost, no change in the cost. Item 284 is with Civics Plus through the Parks and Recreation Department for Civics Plus Statement of Work. It's a new software system to support the daily departmental operations. Year one is twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. Year two is sixteen thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Year three is seventeen thousand three hundred seventy dollars and eighty-seven cents for a total of forty-seven thousand twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. It's a thirty-six month build annually through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Two eighty-five is with HIP LINK Software through the Emergency Management Agency for a messaging, messaging system for E911. The amount is six thousand five hundred, five hundred ninety dollars for one year. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 286 is with Monday.com through the Technology Services Department for the enterprise contract renewal for 70 users. The amount is forty-three thousand six hundred eighty dollars. It is for one year. The term is July 3rd, 2025 through July 2nd, 2026. This is through the general fund. Item 287 is with ESO Solutions through Fire Rescue Department for emergency reporting software. This is the access to historical data. It's change order number one, the contract 2024-97. It's a price increase to five hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents annually. The previous cost was five hundred dollars a year. This is a term extension and a renewal for July 13th, 2025 through July 12th, 2026, adding one additional annual renewal option through July 12th, 2027. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. And I'm going to stop right here for a vote.
So I move to approve these contracts as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, I do, I do have two questions. Um, Director Hammer, on the, on item 2025-283 for McCarthy Barnsley, they are going to get a time extension. And can you give me that time extension, the number of days that it'll be extended?
It's seventy-seven days.
Okay. Is that the exact amount of days we've had for rain delay?
It's, some of it is for the rain days that we've had. A lot of it is for the underground. There were underground pipes that we uncovered. There was groundwater issues. So we can plan for the cost for those by putting in items in based on historical data. It's very difficult to figure out how many in advance, how many days you need to.
So they did have some days built in already.
They did.
On top of that, we exceeded about seventy-seven days?
Yeah, we've had, we've already had thirty-six rain days, I believe, or thirty rain days this year. This doesn't count last year as well, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And my next question is for Director Moore Jackson. Um, we have on our item, uh, well, we have Civics Plus, which is a new software, and I'm sure your department has assessed that. Um, and then we also have Monday.com with 70 users. For software, I know that we've talked several times about the importance of software, making sure that it's fully utilized. Do you feel for Monday.com? Can you give me an assessment of how effective you think it's been or the, how, how many people are actually using Monday.com?
First, first of all, good morning, Chair and Commissioners Williams and Smith. And thank you for the opportunity. And our department, we reviewed the use of Monday.com and we also looked at the fact that, if I recall correctly, with the past briefings that all of the departments gave before the chair at the beginning of the year, it was my understanding that the tracking of the KPIs and the performance measures that are listed in Monday.com is actually the topics that were used during those discussions. I know for our discussion with Technology Services, we actually use that. And within Technology Services Department, we actually use it to track our KPI, all of our projects, because we have over a hundred projects that we're doing for the county. And we have, what, like over eight thousand service tickets? So it's very useful for us.
Wow. So eight thousand is a number for the year?
It's about an average for the year for our service tickets. But mainly we use Monday.com to track our projects, our KPIs and our performance measures. Now, would I encourage all departments to better utilize the software? Of course, because I think that the performance measure should be a key driver of everything that everyone is doing. And if it's not in the strategic plan, then therefore we should not be doing it. And using Monday.com, it's a key tool in order to make sure everyone's on track doing that.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your help. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the motion carries.
Okay, item 288 is with the Department of Natural Resources and this is to rescind contract 2022-145, change order number two. And it was approved on April 8th, 2025 through the General Services Department for the DeCastro Trailhead Nature Center and Pavilion. The limitation of use affidavit to be signed and recorded with the county's property records. And this was for signature only.
Do we need to take that one separately?
Yes, please. It would be to rescind the, uh, contract.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, I move to rescind this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And then item, we'll take the, um, next few items collectively then.
Okay.
Okay, item 289 is with the Department of Natural Resources through the General Services Department for the DeCastro Trailhead Nature Center and Pavilion. This is change order number three to contract 2022-145. It will replace the change order number two that you just rescinded. It's a limitation of use affidavit for a hundred point two acres of land to be signed and recorded with the county's property records and it is for signature only. Item 290 is with ACOM Technical Services Incorporated through the Transportation Department for Old Covington Highway Design from DeKalb County to Sigmund Road Project. This amendment, this is amendment number one to the task order one to contract 2023-125A. This is no change in the cost and is to extend the term by 12 months through December 30th, 2026.
So should we take those two separately? Since one, we're approving a contract and the next one, we're rescinding the contract.
Yes, you can, or we can do a collective motion either, whichever the board would choose to do.
Okay, so I move to approve contracts, uh, 2025-289 and rescind contract 2025-290.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you. And then item 291 is with the Gwinnett County and Gwinnett County Water and Sewer Authority through the Water Resources Department. This is for emergency water usage agreement, intergovernmental agreement to purchase a supply of water from Gwinnett on an emergency basis as a secondary water connection as required by the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. The county to pay Gwinnett at their current base water rate for emergency uses. This is for a 25-year period and is a budgeted item.
Madam?
Would you like to take the next one?
Okay.
Item 292 is with JR Bowman Construction Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for the Fire Training Center located at 2259 Southwest Smyrna Road. The amount is one million four hundred seventy thousand dollars. This is in the 2017 SPLAS funded. The amount for the SPLAS is four, four hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. The amount in the 2023 SPLAS is funded total of one million nine hundred forty-two thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. This is a budgeted item. If you'd like to take these two contracts together.
I move to approve these contracts as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the motion carries.
And we'll take the next few requisitions collectively. Item 293 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for DICESS Solutions. This is for sixteen Meriaki outdoor cameras for the water treatment plant. The amount is twenty-eight thousand seven hundred two dollars and seventy-two cents. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 294 is a requisition through the EMA Department for DICESS Solutions for E911 Center Network Project. This is for two catalyst port network advantage. The amount is forty thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. This is through the CIP funds and is a budgeted item. Item 295 is a requisition through the General Services Department for the Matrix Engineering Group. This is for additional materials testing and engineering services for the Judicial Administrative Complex. The amount is ninety thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars. This is through the JAC funds and is a budgeted item. Item 296 is a requisition through Fire Rescue Department. This is for the North America Fire Equipment Company, NAFCO. This is for turnout gear for sixty-six firefighters. The amount is two hundred ten thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. This is CIP funded and is a budgeted item. Item 297 is a requisition through Fire Rescue for municipal emergency services. This is for six self-contained breathing apparatus to enhance firefighter safety and operational efficiency. The amount is forty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars. And this is funded through CIP and is a budgeted item. And 298 is a requisition through the General Services Department for floor creations. This is for the new carpet and vinyl for the courthouse rotunda area renovation. The amount is twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. This is SPLAS funded and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve these requisitions as presented.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. And I did want to see if, just for a moment, we can have Chief Robinson come to the podium just to explain the, um, funding mechanism and, um, the gear that you're getting under this, um, program.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so the sixty-six sets of turnout gear is for, uh, the firefighters to have, uh, the rest of the firefighters to have a second set of turnout gear. Uh, as you can imagine, if you go inside of a house fire and you get completely soaking wet, your, your, your gear is saturated down to, uh, to all the way down to your skin. So they have to work the rest of their 24-hour shift or sometimes 48 hours if they're working overtime. So they take that off and they're able to put it, uh, in gear dryers, but it takes time to do that. So the next call is going to come out, uh, right there afterwards. If you have to put that same wet gear on, it actually, uh, can harm the firefighter going inside of a, a hot environment. Uh, it can actually steam them and create burns that would not be created, uh, in a dry set of gear. So with the firefighters we have, most of them already have a second set, but the new ones we just, uh, brought on and, uh, some of the, uh, newer firefighters did not have a second set. And then a couple of them are, uh, they're, they're actually getting old. So one of the things we'll always have is, uh, with, as being firefighters, we're always working against the clock. So 10 years is max for turnout gear. It's max for our SCBAs, which, uh, all of, everything, uh, that we wear is very expensive for, for obvious reasons. So, uh, the, the funding mechanism for, uh, this project is the CIP funds, uh, for, uh, that we asked for, uh, for this year. Um, so that's, uh, that's how we're able to fund the items.
Okay, and then the breathing apparatus?
Yes, ma'am. It's the, that's actually the, the pack that we wear, uh, on our backs. Uh, so what, right now, we have exactly enough of the ones that are in compliance to be on the apparatus. So right now, we actually have to take a truck out of service for them to test, uh, the, the apparatus or do any kind of repairs on them. Or we might have to take a pack out, uh, of service. So the six extra, or the six that we're getting, will, they'll be able to take those packs and, uh, put them on the trucks. Uh, and while they're repairing their apparatus, uh, we actually, one of the great things about Rockdale County, uh, which is, this is the only place I've ever been that has this, is we actually, we're actually able to repair our own apparatus. We have, uh, personnel that's gone, uh, our breathing apparatus. Uh, we've gone, uh, had personnel that's gone to school, uh, multiple weeks of school. And we, the very expensive packs, you know, they're about seventy-five hundred dollars apiece. Uh, we're able to actually, uh, repair those, uh, and continually we send people, uh, to school to continue to be, uh, to get, uh, more training, uh, in order to, uh, stay current on all the new, uh, techniques to, uh, do that. With that, it allows us to warranty most of our packs. So if we do have, um, parts that break, uh, from, as you can imagine, being inside of a, a fire or, uh, any kind of hazardous environment, uh, you're going to have things that wear and tear and break on apparatus, on breathing apparatus. So, uh, we're actually able to repair those and then we'll, uh, send those back for warranty. And it saves us a lot of money every year, uh, and able, being able to do that, too.
Very good. And thank you for your leadership. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, the motion carries.
So Madam Chair, we need to, uh, go back to item 2025-290 with ACOM. That contract should have been adopted. There was only one contract on this agenda that should have been rescinded, and that was the Department of Natural Resources. So if we could, if I could read this one aloud and we could take another vote to correct this item, please.
To adopt, is that what?
To adopt, yes. Yes, absolutely. So that would be item 290 with ACOM Technical Services Incorporated through the Transportation Department for the Old Covington Highway Design from DeKalb County to Sigmund Road Project. This is amendment number one to act, to task order number one for contract 2023-125A. This is at no change in cost and to extend the term by 12 months through December 30th, 2026. And it would be to approve this contract.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you so much.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to item 299, budget amendment request. A is with the Pearl Program Coordinator Salary and Benefits Operational Expenditures Budget of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. This is transferred from the State Court to the Sheriff's Office. B would be the Tax Commissioner Supplemental Payments for Stormwater Collections of forty-six thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars, transferred from the stormwater to Tax Commissioner. C is a 2.5% Cost of Living Adjustment COLA for all Rockdale County employees for 12 pay periods out of budget savings and contingency. This is through the general fund of six hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and the enterprise fund of eighty-eight thousand one hundred fourteen dollars.
All right, and if we can take, um, item A and just list, um, I just want to make sure that we have the right, uh, funding source in place. Is there grant funds for item A that still exist?
Um, Deputy Director, would you like to take the?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. This A is a Pearl program and earlier it was funded from grant, now it's funded from general fund. And here it just to move from State Court to the Sheriff's Office and that's why they need to fund also. And there is no change in explanation, just to move from one place to another.
So that's a program that's funded from the general fund?
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
And is there anybody that can talk about the Pearl program?
I'm not, don't think we have a representative from the Sheriff's Office here this morning.
I'm not, don't think we have a representative from the Sheriff's Office here this morning.
I do know that they work with the senior community.
So, it's a program to prevent abuse of elderly people. It started with, when Judge Cuthbert was here, he started that program, which is why it was, been in State Court, but apparently, the Sheriff's Office is taking that over now. So, it's been valuable.
Okay.
So, those are the three budget amendments that are proposed.
Okay.
I move to approve these budget amendments as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
So, item 300 is a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners to authorize certain persons to act as agents to issue citations. Periodically, we have to update those employees that are able to issue citations in the magistrate court.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 301 are updates to the Rockdale County Employee Classification and Pay Plan. These are updated job descriptions for the resolution that you just adopted to authorize certain persons to act as agents to issue citations in the magistrate court. This is through the Human Resources Department. So, you have to go in and actually make a change to an employee's job description to ensure they have this job duty attached to issuing citations.
So, I move to approve these updates to the job descriptions as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 302 are volunteer appointments. A is with the Rockdale County Development Authority, Ashley Rustam, to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Douglas Sanders. The term expires June 30th, 2028. And B is with the Viewpoint Health Board for Dr. Anise Mayberry. The term is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve these appointments as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
I have a question, though. In reference to the Viewpoint, so, was there a change in the number of appointees that we could do now?
There was, and it's, it's a state thing that is not public yet for the reason. As soon as it's public, I'll let you know.
Okay. And I think the point of the question was that it looked like we had two appointments available, but it's actually one, just because of probably reduction in board size.
Originally, we did have two, and now just one.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. So, I need a motion?
We already did that.
Motion, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to thank the citizens, both Ashley Rustam and Dr. Anise Mayberry, for volunteering to serve in those capacities.
Okay. Item 303 is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the adoption of the Rockdale County Local Emergency Operations Plan.
I move to approve this resolution as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. If we could have the Director just say a few words about that plan and what it means for our community.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This local emergency operations plan is a long time coming. We had one in place, but it really needed to be updated, especially with the new department heads, new commissions. So, I'm excited that we're finally where we need to be. This plan is how we respond as a government when we have a disaster or a major event, and it talks about mitigation, preparedness, recovery, and pretty much the overall response of how all departments in the county will respond. I do want to thank all departments for their input, the feedback, as well as the City of Conyers for their input and feedback, so that if we ever do or are faced with an incident, we know how to respond and how we're all going to work within this plan. And I do thank you all for reviewing and adopting this plan and getting to where we need to be.
Well, I do appreciate all your hard work, and thank you to the Directors who made it possible to pull this all together. You and I did speak about finding ways that we can engage our community when we have natural disasters and things like that, whether it's a storm or whatever, just partnering with people in the community to have a response team outside of just our staff, our team members in Rockdale County Government. So, you know, we want to continue to build those relationships, and maybe at a future town hall meeting, we can focus on this conversation.
Perfect, and we are, you know, trying to grow our CERT, our Community Response Team, as well as in, we got a damage assessment team, I'm sorry, a shelter training coming up that we are trying to target the churches, any type of organization who can assist us when we have to open up shelters in a major disaster.
So, talk about that a little bit more, about what a CERT team is.
So, CERT is volunteers within the community, it's called Community Emergency Response Team, and they come in and get basic training. So, the week is about 11 weeks. We have little things in there like CPR, where you go ahead and train for CPR, AED use, but it teaches you how to fend for yourself in a disaster. So, say a tornado comes through and first responders can't get to you, you can look out for yourself, your family, and then assist your neighbors in their time of need. And then we also have what we consider an active CERT team, who we utilize as our volunteers. So, when we have a disaster, we actually call them in to assist EMA in those incidents as well.
Very good. And when can the citizens maybe expect to hear more news about that?
So, we have an informational meeting coming up in September. So, if you look on our social media, we already posting that date, as well as on the county social media as well. And then that'll be an informational, and then the classes will start from in on out.
And I know I met with a team from the American Red Cross the other day, so, you know, everything we can do to be able to respond at the highest level is what we're planning for. And so, we are excited to be able to engage our citizenry to make that happen. And so, definitely, we want to learn from the past as we move forward.
And to piggyback off that, my team right now is meeting with Red Cross at First Baptist up on the north side, as well as JP Car and Johnson Park as shelters for a major incident.
Excellent, excellent. Do we have one on the south side?
We do not yet. We are in talks with, of course, we have Heritage Hills, who is one of our pod locations, but we are trying to expand that on the far north side, or I'm sorry, on the south side to have one.
So, like down Honey Creek, that area?
So, we, 212 area, so we're looking at Heritage Hills, maybe Emmanuel, so out further that way. Yes ma'am.
Maybe Cross Point. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, item 304 and 305 were removed from the agenda, so that takes us to item 306, which is Stage Analytics through the Superior Court for Professional Services for Opioid Abatement Plan Implementation Strategy. It's $135,000 annually, one year, with renewal of up to four one-year terms, renewable each year. This is through the Opioid Settlement Fund and is a budgeted item.
Ma'am Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And Madam Clerk, which judge's court is overseeing this program? Is it Judge Wood?
I think it's Judge Bill.
I think it's Bills.
Oh, Judge? Okay, Judge needs, he bills.
Judge Bills is on the regional advisory board.
It is Judge Bills. That's correct.
Thank you for her leadership in that regard. I know that the local Rotary Club is also working for District 6910, of which Commissioners Smith and I are members, and so I know that they are also having a team and looking at about a $500,000 impact in the whole district, 6910, which is several clubs. Okay. Great. All right, very good. Thank you. We vote?
We do.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Item 307 is a requisition through Technology Service for Act Zero Incorporated for Managed Detection and Response Services for up to 1,200 endpoints. The amount is $36,543. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item. Item, oh, sorry. Do you want to take the next requisition, too?
Yes. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Item 308 is a requisition through the Parks and Recreation Department for Open Hand Atlanta. It is for 19,700 home-delivered meals in an amount not to exceed $91,605. This is through the General Fund for frozen and shelf-stable goods that are reimbursed to the county through the Home and Community-Based Services Multi-Service Grant. This is a budgeted item.
So, I move to approve these requisitions as requested.
Ma'am Chair, I second the motion, but I have a question as well.
Okay.
In reference to the Open Hand Atlanta program, can you tell us how these meals are delivered? What services it goes through, and how can citizens partake if they're not?
Yes, good morning. This is actually through our Senior Services Division, so they handle all the operations and deliveries of that. They do team up, but let me go back to my Deputy Director to get that particular information and follow up with you today. Deputy Director Susan Morgan, and I can follow back up.
Okay.
But for any questions, you can definitely email. They can email myself, as well as Deputy Director Susan Morgan. Yes ma'am.
And can you state that email for me, if you don't mind, for Susan Morgan?
Yeah, so susan, S-U-S-A-N, dot Morgan, M-O-R-G-A-N, at rockdalecountyga.gov.
Okay. Very good. And one more question. Have we, have we worked with Open Hand Atlanta before on contracts?
I don't think we've gone through Open Hand Atlanta before. It may be this is the first one that we've used through the ARC, but it sounds like maybe they're opening it up a little bit.
Yeah, they might have a, be a new source.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
I know we need a vote now.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 309 is an expenditure request for evidence-based associates through the Juvenile Court for Functional Family Therapy Services for May 2025. The amount is $16,377.28. This is grant-funded and is a budgeted item.
So, I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
Ma'am Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
No ma'am.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
So, item 310 are three separate departments and their fees that we are looking at amending and for some, adopting for the first time. So, the first item is A, which is 2021-2-8, as amended for a policy, and this is the Parks and Recreation Facility Fees, and Director, sorry, Interim Director Tahara Wilson is here to present the proposed fee schedule, which you have before you. And as she begins to go through some of the fees, I know there were some suggested amendments that each of you might have, so we'll just have that discussion, and the Deputy Director will take it away.
All right, good morning again. So, before you, you have several pages of suggested fees, and some of those fees are combined with previous fees that we had in our last proposal in 2021, and some are introduced as new fees. So, on page one, as you can see, some of the reintroduced fees that we have, and we actually went and did an actual comparative analysis to other organizations similar to ours, as well as other businesses that offer services and programs and rentals similar to ours to kind of stay on task with the pricing. But we tried to keep pricing at a mediocre standpoint, as well as raise some prices for non-residents in order to generate some type of revenue when it comes to our rentals. On page one, you'll see Johnson Park Recreation Center admission fees, which stay the same across the board. That include individual fees, as well as our family passes. If you look further down, our daily admission for Black Shoals Park, we increased that by a couple of dollars compared to the previous fee structure, and just just based off inflation and additional amenities that we have and upgrades to the parks that we introduced to our Parks and Rec and to the community. In addition, if you look lower, our outdoor facility rentals have really increased over time with the popularity in our marketing, with social media, the help from our marketing team, as well as our internal staff members are doing a great job getting the word out, the billboards that we use to advertise our facilities and our rental spaces, the amount of events that we're hosting, we're bringing people from outside of the county that are now being exposed and want to come in and use our rental spaces. So, we did go up slightly on those fees in order to generate more revenue to the county. So, Rockdale County Auditorium, we went up to $800, as well as the JP Car Community Center, we went up slightly to $450. If you do see the rental coordinator listed on that page one, that's just a new idea for our employees to actually have an incentive for working our rentals to make sure that our assets are being returned whole after the rentals and keeping the spaces safe and not messing up any type of facility across the board, as well as our external rentals. So, that'll be something that's introduced to the, to you all as the board, but that was our idea behind that. The employee gets paid $25 an hour. The customer who is renting, the renter, would pay that fee based off the contract. So, I've been working with HR to see if we can do that internally or externally, whatever the best option is for us. But I think that will help with morale as well for employees to get, you know, some extra income, not just from their first assignment. There are other Parks and Rec agencies within the metro who do it. City of Atlanta, they also do it. I came from there, and it was, it's very transparent. It's a transparent process. The supervisors for that facility or over those personnel still oversaw the day-to-day for that rental, as well as that employee who's covering it, if that makes sense.
And the school, Rockdale County Public Schools does that.
Oh.
When we rent the Career Academy?
Yes.
We pay additional for the janitorial custodial service.
Yes ma'am. And it's kind of similar to, I believe, to our sheriff's deputies that we pay a $55 an hour fee to outside of their regular first assignment, so. All right, page two, you'll see our athletic fees. Oh, that sounds, okay.
Heard you talking about them.
It's our athletic fees. So, we did offer something new this time. We offered an early bird special to kind of motivate parents and family members to get in and register their youth, because sometimes they wait to the last minute, so that affects our operation when it comes to ordering of the uniforms, scheduling of the referees. So, just a little perk that we wanted to add this, this time around. The registration fees, we came, we remained at a very nominal low price for those working parents and grandparents and other guardians of the youth. In addition, we've added some other additional amenities in the middle, Johnson Park Gymnasium. So, our gymnasium is becoming very popular at Johnson, as well as JP Car. So, we have external, like AAU tournaments, or even birthday parties. Some parents now want to use, not just the large meeting room, but the gym as a secondary space for their birthday party. So, we took that into consideration with the pricing. Our incidental fees, just a side note, our incidental fee of $300, that's across the board for a pavilion or indoor facility, well, actual facility. So, that's the same price point.
And how does that work with the rental?
So, at the time of registration or renting the facility, the incidental fee is based off of you paying for any coverage of loss of, so if you mess up the facility, if someone damages anything, then we recoup that. But if you leave the facility as is and return it to the original state, then that refund gets, or that rental deposit gets put back on your card.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, just to, just to add it something to make sure people are accountable to using our space. Let's see.
And let me ask you, since we're on Johnson Park, are there times where there's no cost if people want to come and just play basketball? How does that work? Like open gym, I guess is what I think.
Yeah, open gym is like a daily admission price. However, you get not just the gym, you get access to the swimming pool, you get access to the walking track, and our fitness center. So, we do encourage that, and it's at all day. So, if you come in today, we change our wristbands. So, today may be blue, so let's say you want to come in and use the gym, but maybe you want to come back and use, you're still honored with that price. So, it's more than just a one.
And they pay the $3 fee?
Yeah, they pay the $3 fee currently for a resident.
All right. But they could also buy a pass?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they could also, yeah, if they would like to, yeah. If they know they're going to be coming on a regular basis, or, you know, periodically through the month, if it's a better deal for them, we do have individual monthly passes, family passes, as well as quarterly passes.
Okay.
Yes ma'am. On page three, that is, we step into our tennis center fees.[1744.12] So those fees are, uh, three dollars per hour per player anytime Monday through Friday, nine to six, if you want to come in and just play. Um, we also offer team fees, uh, as well as membership fees. Um, we really try to push the membership at the tennis center. Um, we like to bring in the morale and expose, uh, people to the game of tennis. Uh, Mr. Mike Ragland does a great job out there in recruiting as well as his team. Um, in addition to that, we have tournament rentals. We've just added those prices and went up on those because again, just like our other athletic spaces, the tennis center is becoming very popular and people wanting to come out and rent that space. So putting a price point on that will be very helpful and is helpful. Um, let's see, uh, adult private lessons, we have went up slightly on those. Uh, we're trying to make sure that we are, um, sticking with the competition. Our prices are the lowest around the metro. And sometimes that is, uh, to our detriment because our tennis pros who we love have to make income. So they do go elsewhere. So that sometimes can reduce our amount of programming because we don't have those, uh, tennis coaches in place. Because of the seventy thirty split that they receive from that is not as much as they would like. So they go elsewhere sometimes. Um, but they're very, um, they work with us, but we're trying to work with them as well. Uh, so we did go up on those prices to try to retain some of those coaches and recruit other, uh, certified coaches. Um, let's see, on the next page, just another outline, um, of our junior players. Uh, we kept those price points low. Uh, we really didn't increase much, maybe five dollars. Um, and then we get down to our Costly Mill Park fees. Uh, Costly Mill Park, over the past three to four years, I have deputy Bing here as well. Uh, and she can speak to some of the things I'm about to reiterate, but we definitely, um, increased in popularity. Uh, we have several social media posts circulating across the nation. That's up to maybe twenty thousand views, ten thousand shares. So a lot of people are coming in because of those social media posts. So they're inquiring about other, um, amenities on the park. Uh, a- again, we went out and looked at competition around us and what they're actually charging to rent spaces. Um, and we want to make sure that we're capitalizing on possible revenue generating, um, ventures. So we did go up, uh, substantially on these prices, but again, we went out and compared prices in the metro. So we try to stay on cue with that. Let's see, uh, our beach daily admission, uh, we did keep that four dollars across the board, but we are offering free options for our babies three and under as well as our seniors. Um, it's very important that we don't price out our seniors, um, here in the community and we would love for them to be, um, open and recreate with us uh, for free at their leisure. And then, let's see, on the bottom of that, you'll see some regulations and some breakdown of the memberships for the senior services. Um, the annual membership fee for the Livia Haydel Senior, Senior Center is twenty five dollars for Rockdale County residents, sixty and over. Uh, out of county memberships for the senior center are fifty dollars per year. Scholarships may be requested for low income in county person, uh, persons, excuse me. And Deputy Morgan does a great job of assessing that, um, to make sure that we are supporting our seniors here that are in greater need. Um, and then our facility rental regulations, rules and regulations, um, we hold those very pertinent and important to us. Any person who utilizes any facility maintained by Rockdale County Parks and Recreation shall comply with the facility rental rules and regulations. A copy of the facility rental rules and regulations shall be maintained at Johnson Park Recreation Center. And then I did skip, please excuse me, uh, pickleball. We've added pickleball. I'm, I'm sorry, I got it though. See, you didn't even need to remind me. I got it. Uh, so we did introduce, um, pickleball pricing for private lessons. We have, um, one, uh, vent contractor, Mr. Michael Dyes, who is new to our, um, department. And so he will be starting doing, um, lessons this, later this summer. Uh, but we wanted to introduce those pickleball prices. Uh, we did again, go out and assess, uh, area, uh, pickleball, um, courts and agencies that offer lessons and we tried to mimic those price points to, um, to Rockdale's, um, benefit. So we're excited about that.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is there a, um, swimming limit? Cause people may want to know why you can only swim for two.
Oh, with the swimming limit at the.
Get that question a lot.
Yes. Yeah, at the beach, yes. So we have, uh, we are assessed and we work with the water department as well as, um, I'm losing my thoughts. We did a whole video on it, yeah.
So the reason being, uh, Cooper Watts does an amazing job. He's our aquatics manager, uh, over there in Parks and Recreation.
Will you pull the microphone towards you a little bit? Sorry.
Sorry.
We want to make sure.
Okay, and I'm sorry. Happy Tuesday, ma'am, chair and commissioners. So the reason being, uh, with the red cross, with the lifeguards, they are mandated to have, um, twenty five, um, maximal people per lifeguard. So that's why it's a ratio. So we normally typically try to have three to four lifeguards working in rotation. So that's why it's such a minimal. So each lifeguard is responsible for twenty five to be able to watch and visible watch uh, as the, our community swims. So that's why it's a whole, so just say for instance, if we have three lifeguards working, so the maximal people in, in a session is seventy five people to swim.
But that time limit, there's a time, right?
There are three times, uh, there are three sessions and, um, and I actually brought that with me so I can make sure. Clear, there are three sessions. And again, as I, when I did my presentation last week at the town hall meeting, I mentioned that, you know, due to the safety of water exposure through our health department, we have to take swimming, uh, sessions to, um, get the community out of the water just for healthy, health safe reasons uh, through the health department. But let me pull up the swim sessions. We do have three swim sessions. And again, our weekend, um, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and the sessions start from twelve to one thirty. Uh, then the lifeguards take a break and two fifteen to three forty five starts the second session. Lifeguards take a break and then four thirty to six P M concludes our third session. And six P M ends the swim time. So it's twelve to six, but it's until three sessions. Now, as Deputy Director Wilson said, um, there is two or three big bloggers that's out there that's, uh, they do nature. Uh, they're very popular on Instagram and Facebook and it's actually been millions of views. I'm watching it because I get deans on my phone. But it's really, um, bringing people from Stakesborough, Savannah. People are driving in to Costly Mill. We've had so many people this past two weeks come far and near to swim. So we're trying to make it fair because it's starting to kind of be a little overwhelming. So we're really doing strictly sticking to the wristbands and the sessions because we don't want to turn anyone down from swimming. So we're starting now to do session swims. So if you swim the first session, we want to give different color with wristbands so another group of people can swim. Because we have had to turn away people due to the amounts of, uh, four, and we've been having four lifeguards now that it's been overwhelming. So a hundred people per session, so three hundred people swimming each weekend at Costly Mill in one day.
So you're on, the beach is only open on the weekends?
Only on the weekends, so Memorial, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And of course, Saturday and Sunday are the days because people are all from work and they want to be in the park. So the beach is really overtaking Costly Mill at this time. I'm excited about it, but we still want to keep it safe and keep it, uh, lifeguard safe and everyone safe.
So if you come in, you can only swim one session?
Well, we kind of did that on Sunday because it kind of got a lot of overwhelming for us on Saturday. So we, we started that on this Sunday, just to allow, because there were a lot of people that didn't swim on Saturday. Because we just, you know, people don't want to get out of the water. They want to stay in and I get it, you know? And I, but on Sunday in all fairness, but everything went well on, on Sunday. The team reported and said everyone was able to swim. But I think Saturday is kind of, it fluctuates from Saturday and Sunday, but those are our most busiest days, out of the, out of the days.
And forty five minutes seems like a long time in between those time periods. I know most people are probably used to pool lifeguards and the breaks and even at Johnson Park, the breaks that may happen there um, are shorter. So can you talk about any thought about lessening that time? Or where that recommendation came from for forty five minutes in between?
Well, I will have to speak with Mr. Cooper Watts. Then he's the lead, uh, aquatics manager and I'm not for sure, uh, these are the sessions and we actually, um, Ms. Bruton, the operations manager and, uh, Cooper Watts came up with this, uh, rotation. And I'm pretty sure there's reasoning behind the forty five minute. Um, and I'm not for sure even what the health department wanting us to make sure that the people get out of the water. So I'll check on that chair and commissioners, the red cross and make sure that, um, we're in compliance with the times.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, and so thank you very much for the presentation. I do appreciate it. I know this is, um, something that is very important because for our revenue enhancement, we know that there are many departments that have not increased fees in some as many as ten years. So we know that in our efforts to help our citizens and businesses and the tax situation, we, we are assessing all of those things. I do want to say that there's, um, in my opinion, you did a great job with recommendations. I would love to just see our usage at different parks and recreation fees to make sure that we are maximizing opportunities. And as an example, I hear Costly Mill is very busy. Um, but maybe we have the, have other park facilities that may not be as busy. And I'd like to just see maybe a plan of how we can grow the, um, attendance at those other parks and make sure that our rental rates are in line with, um, with the usage, if that makes sense. So I did want to ask if we could consider deferring this to our next meeting also for public feedback about the rates. Um, I know that these rates are something that your department's worked on and I certainly appreciate that. But just if, should there be any public information or thoughts on the fees, um, I think it would be a good time. And I do know that I've heard from a couple of people in the tennis community who said that the team rates um, are certainly the lowest around and maybe could even stand to be increased a little bit, so. So what is the will of the board?
So just this particular one or are you going to do?
Just this one. I think the others, um, are good, but.
She's about to say something.
Um, well, you know, the idea of having, letting people have an opportunity to comment, I'm thinking perhaps we need to defer all three of them. Get the presentations and then so people know. Especially stormwater, because people are going to think right off that we're raising their stormwater rates and that isn't what we're doing. But, um, they need to understand.
Well, we're assessing that too in all fairness, so, um, but that's a separate mechanism. But this is the stormwater department, so, yes. So maybe we can hear from stormwater and then fire rescue?
Yes, and Deputy Director Johnson is, uh, prepared or, um, to talk about the stormwater, uh, fees. And so is Chief Robinson on behalf of fire rescue. And I'll just say while he's making his way up to the podium that the fees that are set for stormwater and for fire rescue this morning are really more aimed at, uh, development and plan review and things like that, if that, uh, is consideration of the board.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Madam Commissioners, good morning. I'm glad to get up and talk to you about these fees. Please, thank you very much. Permitting and impact fees play a vital role in protecting the quality of life in Rockdale County. These fees ensure that new development contributes its fair share to infrastructure and services that support our growing community. Specifically, they help fund the operations of the stormwater management department. I'm gonna say that one more time. They help fund the operations of the stormwater management department, which is responsible for maintaining drainage systems, reducing flooding on property and roadways, protecting local road, ru- waterways and ensuring compliance with state and federal regulations. Investing in this responsible development through these fees is going to safeguard our environment, public health and property values for, for many years to come in Rockdale. With all the rain that we've been getting in recent weeks, stormwater management is, is more important than ever. A lot of these aging, uh, neighborhoods, these pipes have lifespans. These corrugated metal pipes that were put in back in the day have lifespans of twenty five years. Some of these neighborhoods are thirty plus years old. Sinkholes are showing up. We had one that showed up off of Lambeth Way, uh, over the weekend. Uh, that our crews had to come out and address. You can all, you can guarantee that if one sinkhole has popped up on Lambeth Way, there will be others that will start popping up on other streets in these neighborhoods. It is of paramount importance that we have the funding to address these needs. You know, Rockdale at one point in time had many road closures around the county. You know, with funding, we're able to come in and address those proactively, not just reactively. Got anything else you want to add?
Uh, we'll just talk about the fee schedule that's presented right here. So this is the capture, basically the last fee schedule that was updated for L D P for review processes, for inspections. It was done in two thousand and six. So for us, just say a single family home, a person come in to get a permit, we was charging them ten dollars. And then two hundred and fifty dollars for the actual N P D S fee. So imagine you got an engineer reviewing their plans from a compliance standpoint. You're paying that engineer his salary. So if you take four hours out of his salary, it's not being covered. So we was losing all the way around on the actual permitting process. So this is what, we, we capture our needs to provide the services that we're going to provide and to also, from an impact standpoint. Say a project goes in a subdivision, I use just a subdivision. Say it takes on an average eight months to start from the preliminary plat to the final plat, meaning they got the infrastructure in place. From a compliance standpoint, my environmental inspectors have to go out after every rainfall inspection at least one week through the week to verify compliance. So with the permit, with the amount of, that we was charging people, we weren't capturing them, that fee. So basically, we was paying for the services for that development. And all we asking here is a lot of de- development to pay for the services that's needed there and that would be through the permitting process.
That sounds, okay, so I would agree with you that we should approve it today.
Yes, and, and I do want to come up with, um, you know, just a couple of conversations about the different things. So a land disturbance permit in a subdivision is only ten dollars per lot. Talk, talk about the time you put in. And I don't know how ten dollars a lot covers that. Like, right now, the citizens would tell you, it's not enough. And because you're funded through an enterprise fund, which you guys are, are an enterprise fund, let me say that. And you're funded through businesses and citizens that own property in the community and that's on their tax bills. You're, you're typically not thrilled about that, but it's necessary for the long-term investment in our community's infrastructure. So talk about where this number came from. Did you analyze the fees at other communities?
Yes, we did. Uh, the ten dollars per lot, that doesn't include the review fee. So if you look at, if we're looking at subdivision for the actual land development, ten dollars per lot, that's not including the plan reviews that's going to be required for the fees on that side. That's right below it. That does.
So let's walk through, what would a developer see?
Okay, so as a developer, what he would come, when he makes it, when they come in and submit their plans from an application standpoint, they would have to pay for, say the, say the preliminary plat says it has fifty lots. So they would do the fifty times ten. So that would take care of each lot. Then they would come down and they would have to address the actual subdivision construction for erosion settlement control, which is two hundred plus ten dollars per acre from a fee amount.
And where did you get that number? Down here under?
It's up on the plan review fee. So if you see that, everything that's tied to subdivision, that's what that actual permit would require.
So even if they have only thirty five lots, they still have a minimum of five hundred dollars?
Yes, ma'am. And then you'll come down and you'll have your erosion and sediment control fee that they'll be required to do from erosion and sediment control standpoint. Then if they have any state waters on site, that will have to go out and identify if they have any creeks or anything. It would be an actual two hundred dollar review for it. Then we would take in the valuation of the total project. So say the total project based on the infrastructure being installed, say it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you will go to the line out of where it says a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand up under the land development fees based on valuation. And they would be charged. And they would be charged at ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Do that math again, for, I see, wow.
Oh, it's on the second page.
So if you come down to the land development permit fees based on valuation of job,
Okay.
If that total project costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, between a hundred thousand and one dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, their base permit would be ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And that would be added to the other island, like just, we just talked about the fees. So now, just give you a prime example. We have a development that's going in. And they've reached out to us during the review process, but the project is in Conyers. So we won't get any other permit fees. But in order them to do their project, their stormwater facility discharges to the county side. Our pipes are undersized on our size. So in order for them to do it, the county, they're requiring the county to come in and upsize those pipes. So from our standpoint, we're not getting any permit fees from this job, but we're required to upsize it for their development. So that's the inconsistency that we have here.
And, and how does that get changed with this?
This right here, because now, on their side, where they're, where they're discharging to us, we have a review fee.
And that would be under their land development permit fees?
Correct, now we're able to capture it, because we can issue our part, because you're discharging to our system.
I think that will make our citizens very happy.
Yes ma'am. So whatever that actual discharge from that stormwater facility, we can calculate that and get a permit fee from it to actually do what we need.
Okay, and let's talk about um, the goals of the board, which are sustainability.
Okay.
How is that reflected in here? The things we wanna prevent are clear-cutting.
Okay, so what that allows us to do from our review standpoint. So for plan review, to pay for, if we have an arborist who's gonna be a consultant, this fee would cover him. Because it'll be captured-
Which fee?
The land, the review.
The land-
It'll be the land review and the actual inspection review.
And Deputy Direct- I was just gonna say, Deputy Director Johnson, let me help you out here. There is a um, complimentary uh, ordinance that's going along with this about the amendment to the tree ordinance. So this is the first step. But you'll see the first read of that tree ordinance at your next board meeting, and it will wind its way through the public hearing process because it's part of the UDO. So at the completion of that and the adoption of the amended t- tree ordinance, and then you have this that might help if you speak to that as well.
That's correct. So the update to the ordinance, along with the new fees, we'll be able to capture that.
And where on here captures the cost of said arborist?
For the said arborist?
Yes.
That would be part of the actual review, plan review fees. That will go in, so if, if my engineer, he would be allocated a certain amount of time, and the arborist will be allocated a certain amount of time, that we would take that fee and take that out of the actual plan review.
Is there additional fee here, it's listed here for three fifty for the arborists? Is that an additional to the, what you're talking about?
Yes, for their review. That would be calculated in that.
Okay, excellent.
And one last thing I'd like to add to with these fees, is that we went and looked at municipalities. We looked at counties of comparable size and makeup to Rockdale County. This one's just some, some dream we had and we woke up and, and, and came up with these numbers. We did a lot of due diligence to ensure that these numbers were in line with comparable communities. To ensure that we weren't just trying to-
Can you give us some names of the communities you guys-
Uh, Fayette County's one, Peachtree City's one, uh, Johns Creek uh, is another. They were all of comparable size, and we made sure that we're not trying to overburden anyone. But what we're trying to do is make sure we have the proper funding to get the job done.
Yes. And you guys have projects that are probably about a hundred in length, right? Yeah, okay, all right, very good. Thank you for your work on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And so the next one is the fire department, and Chief Robinson is here to talk about his fees as well, so.
Good morning again. Okay, so our fees are very similar to uh, stormwater fees. They are more, uh, most of our fees are permit fees. So uh, it's for developers that wanna come in and, and do uh, projects in the community, build new developments. Uh, and the, the good thing to the average citizen is, we do not have um, jurisdiction in, with one and two-family residential homes. So while it would, we would look at a development uh, to make sure the hydrants are in the right place, that the turn radius for our apparatus can get in, the size of the streets are big enough for our apparatus to go down. And if people park on both sides of the road, we can still get down the middle. Um, all of those things we look at, so we're, we're with a project from the very beginning of it. But as far as the individual house itself, when you come in to get a uh, permit uh, for, to build your house, we, we as the fire department, do not, it doesn't cost you anything, because we, we don't come into your house, so that's handled by-
Is that a pretty standard policy, when there's new construction, that there's no inspections of the life safety for houses?
It's only smoke detectors on the life safety, and then they, of course, they have to have certain sized windows. That's all handled by the building department.
Oh, okay, very good.
It's actually uh, state law um, makes it where we have no jurisdiction inside of one or two-family residential houses. Multi-family residential, like apartments, we do. Um, so uh, to speak to uh, whether we should have fees or not, this, uh, we are the only department uh, around us, and the only one that I know of that do not collect, currently collect fees. So, well, we currently have uh, multiple personnel in our Fire Marshal's Office uh, that is currently being paid by the General Fund. Uh, while they are uh, doing a lot of work uh, and inspections for developers, the developers aren't having to pay any of our permit fees. So, just like if you went to get a, a building permit, or a plumbing permit, electrical permit, any of those permits, we also go in and look at the sprinkler systems, alarm systems, uh, no different than looking at the electrical or looking at the plumbing. We look at all of those things, uh, the firewalls, everything inside of a building, uh, the hydrants outside of it, the, the, the lines that go, the water lines go around it. We're looking at all those things, but we're not charging the developer anything currently. So this uh, puts those fees back uh, to the developer through uh, the permitting process and the plan review process. So we also take in the plan, we look at it. Uh, we have, uh, sometimes we have to send in engineers, but a lot of times, we have uh, three, uh, four plan reviewers, including myself, uh, that are certified uh, to do that. So we're able to look at our uh, own plans uh, for uh, most of our projects. Uh, so if you look at our fees, um, the uh, going down through here, a land development permit, we look at uh, land development from, again, from making sure the hydrants are in the right place, making sure that the road's the right size. We do offer a, an expedited uh, plan review fee, uh, if, if we are available to do so, if our, our workload allows it. Uh, we also have, uh, we look at uh, the uh, fire pumps, uh, suppression uh, standby tanks. So the big tanks you see outside of fire pump rooms, uh, major industries, uh, we have to look at those tanks. And of course, they get updated um, uh, every five years or, or looked at. Uh, the construct, uh, we look at uh, actual uh, construction of buildings. Uh, and our, uh, looking at our fees and, and how they're set up. We also went out uh, to uh, multiple jurisdictions uh, around us. We, we looked at the ones right around us, uh, and, and made sure that we were in line with, with, uh, we're not the, the, the lowest, but we're certainly not the highest by, by a long ways on these-
And which communities did you-
Uh, we looked at uh, City Covenant, uh, looked at Newton County, uh, CSO Circle, DeKalb County, um, every, every jurisdiction around us. So we took all their fees and pulled them together, so. Uh, fire sprinkler systems, uh, we have to look at every head, uh, every sprinkler head, every uh, riser that goes into that, so uh, that's uh, one of the fees. If they wanted to put a new one in or modify it. Uh, the uh, special extinguishing systems, such as the, the heads that are up under, like the hood vents, like if you look at like a hibachi restaurant, those kind of, or uh, like deep fryers. Uh, the uh, fire alarm systems, uh, we look at, we have to look at uh, every device. We have to go check them, make sure that they're, uh, that they're uh, working as they should, uh, all the pool stations and, and all of those things. Uh, spray booths, uh, like paint spray booths, we have to look at those, make sure that they have the right suppression systems in them. Uh, commercial cooking systems, uh, flammable liquid storage tanks, we, uh, above-ground uh, and underground storage tanks. One thing about, uh, to note about Rockdale County is, we actually have a resolution with uh, the State Fire Marshal's Office. So, I, I believe back in nineteen ninety-six, this resolution was created. And we uh, have, our jurisdiction, we have all jurisdiction of, of state buildings, not just state-owned buildings, but the ones that they would normally come and look at. So after we, uh, our census gets over a hundred thousand, normally we would have to take that over. But we've all, we did it back in nineteen ninety-six, when we were well lower than that. So, uh, all the nursing homes, uh, the hospital, the jails, we, we still have to look at those buildings um, where the, any other jurisdiction that, that hat, does not have that resolution or is not over that many people, the State Fire Marshal's Office comes in and does that. So we don't have, uh, we have to do all of our own, uh, and, and we collect our own fees uh, for that. Uh, the, uh, and that includes gas stations and the, the, the tanks as well. So, uh, there's also, uh, all of those fees that we talked about before, is if you wanna modify or you want to in, uh, install something uh, yourself, uh, for new construction, there's also a uh, follow-up inspection uh, fee that if, if we do not gain compliance and we continue to have to send uh, inspection, inspectors out for someone that has a violation, uh, let's say there's, someone's sprinkler system is down, and we say, hey, you need to get this fixed in the next however many days, and we, we work with them on a reasonable timeframe, and we go back out and there's, there, you can tell that there's, there's no thought or, or they, they have no plans to actually get it fixed. Then it allows us to charge uh, a small fee for uh, our inspector to continue to have to come out and do the, do the same thing over and over again. Uh, after-hours inspections, uh, there, there are times where we have uh, uh, jobs that are going on after hours for, for reasons um, such as traffic or whatnot, and, and that's, uh, what that's fees for. There's also operational permits, so uh, fireworks displays, uh, the temporary stands, that's actually a state law that we have to uh, collect fee for. Um, if, if someone comes and puts like the stand in the Walmart parking, parking lot, we have to collect that fee uh, for the state. Uh, mobile food trucks, uh, high pile, high piled combustible storage, uh, ch- uh, daycares, personal care homes. Uh, we look at all of these things already. Uh, repair garages, motor fuel dispensing, uh, temporary structures. So if you put a, a tent up where you plan on uh, having a, a large party, uh, these are, these are really big tents. Uh, it's required that we look at those. Um, we look at uh, emergency responder radio coverage, which is something new that we're working with E nine-one-one with. Uh, but if you notice, uh, well, you wouldn't, but if, if, if our firefighters or um, police officers, EMS personnel go inside of some of these really large buildings, and they try to key up on their radio, uh, it won't get out. So what, uh, it's actually a law now that we have to put in, uh, it's called a, uh, Interstate Fire Code is five-ten uh, system, uh, where it actually is a repeater system that will pick up, and it's installed in the building, and it'll pick up our radio and it'll repeat it out, uh, back to uh, the E nine-one-one system. Uh, which, and then we're able to actually talk inside of that building. So, for instance, if you go in the middle of a hospital, you can get about, you get about ten steps in the hospital, and we can't talk in there anymore. So we have to come up with innovative ways um, uh, to, to be able to uh, communicate uh, back and forth. So, uh, several uh, small fees, uh, that go like fire, uh, checking fire hydrants. Uh, change of tenant, uh, change of occupancy classification fees. Uh, so if someone wants to uh, completely change a building, to do something completely different, we staff to come in and look at it and make sure that, that it meets the code for what they're wanting to do. Um, so those are, uh, those are our fees. Again, uh, none of this uh, affects uh, one or two-family residential, and it, for the most part, most of our fees are uh, for developers that are wanting to develop new buildings and will, and take the uh, time and uh, efforts of our uh, staff that we have uh, in the Fire Marshal's Office now.
Quick, quick question for you. Does it include um, a fine or assessment for stores that may, um, you know, I know there was an incident with a store who had too many boxes, and it was a hazard, it was blocking aisles in the store, and we had talked to them about being closed down until it was addressed. Are there fines or assessments there that may be necessary?
So the, the great thing about the Fire Marshal's Office is, the, the first thing we try to do is educate. So when we find out that, uh, there is a store with a bunch of boxes piled up, first thing we're gonna do is go out and tell them, hey, we need this cleared. Now, if it's a immediate uh, danger to life and health, uh, we, we won't leave until that's done. We may go over there and grab boxes with them and move them outside, because it's, we, we just can't allow that to be open. Now, let's say that there, uh, something, their, their sprinkler's yellow-tagged, which means it's still operational, but there's something wrong with it, but it, it will still work. Uh, at that point, we'd say, hey, you got seven days to get this fixed. If we go back out there and nothing, nothing's happened with it, so the first time we go out and answer your question, the first time we go out, no. Uh, we wouldn't say, hey, every time you're, the light goes out in your exit sign, you're getting a fee. Uh, but the, if we go back out there and, we've been out there, so we'll go out there the first time, we'll go out there, out there and re-inspect. If they haven't done anything, we have to go back for another re-inspection, yes, it's, it's, it's a hundred dollar uh, fee uh, for us to come back for that re-inspection. And every fee, uh, every inspection after that is, is a hundred and fifty dollars. And then, uh, at that point, the uh, ordinance we uh, adopted earlier, which is the citation ordinance, eventually it just gets to the court system, and, and the uh, court system will, will make them uh, get that fixed or close the doors of the business.
Okay, very good, all right.
So, one thing before you step away from the podium, and this would be a question, should the board adopt any of these fee schedules today? If any of the directors or the chief um, has a recommendation for the effective date, if it's upon adoption or if there needs to be uh, some time in which your department needs to um, get ready to collect these fees?
On, on my end, uh, I would, I would say if we had uh, fifteen to thirty days, I, I would say by uh, July fifteenth, any application that we uh, took after July fifteenth, uh, we would be able to, uh, we'd be able to do that. And we could do it immediately, uh, but just so that we can get our stuff going. We already have a, a mechanism to take invoices, uh, to receive invoices. Uh, we are working in which it'll, uh, there'll be a resolution uh, come, or I'm sorry, a contract amendment uh, for our software, we'll actually be able to take credit card payments. Uh, so we would like to get that done. Uh, it doesn't have to happen immediately, but we would like to have it uh, done uh, pretty quickly uh, so that we can actually uh, make it easier for the developer to uh, to pay the, pay their fees however it's easiest for them. So I would say uh, July fifteenth-
Okay.
Would be fine for us.
We have uh, some homework to do, but once we get that homework to you and assessed, we would like to move immediately to at least give the public at least five to seven days um, notice. We like to notify our publics, since our fees deal with a lot of public, I have over a hundred and eighteen fees that I'm dealing with, so. Uh, yeah, if you count all the fees on it, those papers, yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Uh, for stormwater, you can start today at eleven fifty AM.
I love it!
Eleven fifty AM.
All right, duly noted.
Tomorrow will work, but, you know, if you wanna do eleven fifty today, it'll be fine.
Well, do you just wanna go retroactive? I mean, my gosh, oh, all right.
All right.
So fire, July fifteenth, uh, and stormwater, right at this very moment. And um, so it sounds like, um, if I'm hearing this correctly, the board would be interested in deferring the fee schedule for parks and recreation, adopting stormwater immediately, immediately. And then fire and rescue, uh, adoption today, and then effective July fifteenth. Is that correct?
So if we say immediately, are we talking about-
Upon adoption.
Today? Or would it be effective tomorrow?
It would be today. Tomorrow? Okay, tomorrow.
Okay, that, well, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Very literal person over here, so I've got the pen.
Yes, very good.
Okay, so does that sound like a, a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to defer the Parks and Recreation Facilities fee schedule. Adopt the stormwater fee schedule effective July, June twenty-fifth. And adopt the fire and rescue fee schedule effective July fifteenth.
Yes, good.
All right, Madam Chair, I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
And the last item is item three eleven, which is a requisition through the General Services Department for Laz and Associates LLC. This is for the Rotunda area renovations to add three offices in the lobby area. The amount is thirty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars. This is SPLAS-funded and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Director Hammer, can you quickly tell us, these are permanent additions, not temporary, for the construction of the, of the judicial complex, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And so, what's the long-term plan for that building?
So, on, on this area, we're, we're kinda doing things a little in advance, because there's some need from the Superior Court to have additional offices. Uh, but um, there's some need from the Superior Court to have additional offices, uh, but, um, the offices will remain and be used, uh, when we complete the renovations, we move everybody into the new building, and then renovate the old buildings, it'll just be one piece, we don't have to renovate later on.
So the rotunda will not really be a rotunda?
No, the rotunda area, so when it says the rotunda, we're referring to everything in the hallway there. So the main portion, the offices will be over, uh, in the pink carpet area, if you remember that, it used to be red.
So when you walk in the door, current door, and turn to the right, that, that will all be renovated?
The, if you turn to the right down the hallway, that'll get new carpet. If you go straight down the rotunda and you're in the left area where the, it's like pink carpet, uh, area, that's where the three offices will go. So those are gonna become new offices for Superior Court.
Okay.
That's where they've had receptions and that kind of thing there.
Correct, correct, yes. In the, so that whole area we're referring to is the rotunda, the area with the terrazzo floor and the seal and all the rest, that will remain as it is.
Okay, very good. All right, very good, thank you. And now we'll turn to board comments.
I don't think we voted on it.
Oh, we didn't. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Now we'll turn to board comment.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Smith? Okay, good. Um, good morning, a little bit still. Um, I just want to express, uh, my thoughts and prayers for those affected, um, in Minnesota, the Minnesota lawmakers, um, and just to remind everybody that every county commissioner at, and every appointed county official is a leader, and by some measure, um, they are. Everyone is at some point and usually often scrutinized by quick public judgment and slow to give credit for the good that is done. Um, this is a job. With this job, I will now not allow that sentiment of, you know, not being appreciated stop me from, um, doing what I'm doing and what I was elected to do. Um, I did get elected, and I ran on being a voice for our community and giving you a seat at the table, but I am going to say that you may not like everything that's being served at the table, but you are invited to the table. Um, and you have my word and my intentions will be for what is best for our county, um, as a whole, and I will let you know that I will keep attention on my intentions. So before the Minnesota incident, um, I was asked if I had, um, requested or even have a security detail, and my answer was no. I'm not sure, um, who started this rumor, or why, but it was a lie. I don't know, but had, did you ask for a security detail?
Me?
Yeah. Did you? Okay, so nobody did, so I don't know where it came from, but it's out there. Um, I just want to make sure, 'cause I don't know if, you know, if you did it or not, but, um, but being in the climate that we're in right now, just everybody, please be vigilant and, um, keep your eyes out for everybody, and, you know, watch out what's going on. Um, also, the merchants of Old Town and the city of Conyers had a Juneteenth, um, celebration, and that was an awesome family event. Um, they had great vendors and great entertainment. And also I want to let you know that on July first, the tax commissioners have any town hall, and that will be at six P.M. on, at J.P. Card Community Center. I don't know, um, exactly what they're gonna be discussing because they collect the fees, but we'll see, but it's on July first, and it's actually my birthday. Um, also, uh, there's gonna be a county-wide back-to-school bash. It's all entities within the county that are working together to have one back-to-school bash, and that is going to be in July, I think it's the twenty-sixth, I think it is? Twenty-sixth, yes, July twenty-sixth is our back-to-school bash, and we're asking everybody in the community to participate. If you have any donations of backpacks or school supplies, you can take those to Johnson Park, and that's the collection center, or if you have anything that needs to be picked up, we can make arrangements for, um, to have those things picked up. And also to remind you that we have constituent services that are provided by Congressman David Scott's office every Friday from ten to twelve at our library, and they have a plethora of, um, issues that they will tackle for you, and you can, um, he's been seeing a lot of our constituents every week that he's been here, and he has been here every week. I don't know how people miss him and say that they miss him, and they know they didn't miss him 'cause he was there, but it happens, but he has been there, so, um, I just want to leave you with that. And also today, I want to say, happy anniversary to my husband, we've been married for thirty years today. Um, yes, thank you. It is my anniversary to my husband. Um, it is a pleasure to love and to be loved, so I want to leave you with this, if you have the ability to love, please love yourself first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Those are great comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I want to especially start out by thanking the Finance Department. Anytime there's an audit, there's a whole lot of work that goes in on your part, and, and, you know, documents and everything that you've got to pull up. So I appreciate the, the work that you did and the fact that we had a very good, clean audit this year again, um, and that, that's something not to be taken lightly, that, um, Rockdale County is, is in good fiscal shape, and we need to remember that. Um, I just wanted to comment on the back-to-school bash, that, um, a number of different agencies have been working for months so that it could be done all at one time. In the past, we've had a church here, and community organization there, the county, the jail, just all kinds of different stuff going on, and, and, of course, some people would just go from one to the next. This way, it centralizes everything, puts it all in one place, and makes it fair for everybody, and, um, but I think the thing to really appreciate is the amount of work that has gone into coordinating all of this. So, um, when you speak about anniversaries, that will be my anniversary on that, the day of that school bash, and that will be fifty-one years.
Oh, wow. Those are my comments.
Congratulations.
Did y'all clap for my thirty years? I didn't, I don't remember.
We did.
Oh.
We did, we did.
Not jealous or anything, just making sure.
All right. Well, I just celebrated my twenty-eighth, and I'm the baby on the board, but, um, there's that, so thank you.
We are.
And we really are blessed, all of us and those in the room that join us in having, like you said, having a partner that can support us and, through all of the community service that we have signed up for.
That's right.
Um, sometimes it can be extensive, but, um, I'm glad that we chose the right people.
That's right.
Um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, Northside Hospital, uh, is having a really great event on Thursday, June twenty-sixth. Nope, it's not, just checking you there. Um, Thursday, August seventh, is going to be the one in Conyers, and that is at fourteen ninety-eight Klondike Road, Suite one oh six, and we are grateful for the role that Northside Hospital plays in Rockdale County. Um, we have excellence in Dr. Stephen Carter, who leads that, um, facility, and he is a blessing to many in this community. We are so grateful for his choice of being in Rockdale and serving a lot of people, um, in our community that are experiencing cancer. Um, so anyway, Thursday, August seventh, and I want to also say that, um, I've continued to work with the Chamber of Commerce and gone out to a number of, uh, businesses in our community, and both the industrial, manufacturing arena, and, um, had exciting conversations with many of those, uh, in the community who operate businesses here, and we've talked about, um, expansion opportunities that we want to see in Rockdale County for those businesses, and really talked about ways that would, in collaboration with Georgia Power, that we can work to meet their needs, and also look at, um, incentives for everything from port taxes to state opportunities, so that, that has been exciting to meet with a lot of those, uh, business leaders in the community. And, uh, please know that the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council is working very hard to continue the conversation about economic development in Rockdale, and so they are continuing to look at not only larger industrial projects, but even conversations about, you know, more, um, appealing things like the restaurants and retail that many of, in the community are looking for. So we're working really hard as a collaborative effort in Rockdale, and I think that feels really good to those of us in leadership, to be able to have open doors and a unified effort of coming together for the betterment of our community, so. With that being said, um, do we have a need for executive session?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, this, say it again? Oh, go ahead. Oh, the concert, please tell us.
Talk about it.
Yes, yes, we want to see everybody out this Sunday.
Yes, before we, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, before we go into the concert, I want to make mention of the Nature Wellness Journey Walk that's happening this Saturday, we're super excited at Costly Mill Park. Um, it is a free event, but you must register because we have to keep up with the number of participants. This walk will be guided by a certified nature and forest therapy guide, Ms. Alicia Frizzle. She will be coming, um, from the northern area of Chicago. She does, uh, partner with a lot of governments and corporations to promote wellness, and, uh, we met with her, we got an opportunity to meet with her last year.
Great.
But I want to make sure it is on all of our, uh, there we go, it's on all of our social media, um, websites. I know we've gotten a lot of likes, shares, but I want to make sure that our community and citizens know you must register for this free event, and it will take place this Saturday, June twenty-eighth, at Costly Mill, from twelve to one-thirty P.M. So our goal is to start this wellness, uh, Nature Wellness Journey Walk. We want to bring more programming to Costly Mill as well as Black Shoals Park, and I know that, um, one of the bloggers did say, and I was a little proud, he said that, uh, he actually liked the Black Shoals Park over Stone Mountain, so that says a lot. I'm a fan of Stone Mountain, but for him to even compare us to Stone Mountain to Black Shoals, I'm excited. So, next, um, and everyone has collaborated on the back-to-school walk, Rock one, I know Commissioner Smith was stating, and, uh, Commissioner Williams, we're super excited to partner with the public schools in the city of Conyers, and I'm with Commissioner Williams. We want to make sure that our citizens can just come to one spot, and that's kind of how we did with the East Street Scravaganza, we want our community to be able to come to one spot and pick up their backpacks and school supplies, and we do have a lot of partnerships, uh, we're super excited to partner, and a lot of vendors have been donating a lot of school supplies, so we're super excited about that. And again, that will take place July twenty-sixth from ten to two P.M. at the lawn at Willa Park. Uh, moving right along to our first summer concert series of the season, I'm super excited. We have a great lineup this, uh, year, we have a diverse artist. This Sunday starts, kicks off the summer concert series, and I want to make note, everyone, it will not be at Costly Mill, it is moving to our new amphitheater, thanks to General Services, uh, Director Hammer and your team. We're super excited about hosting the concerts at the lawn at Willa this Sunday from five to seven, so come out, uh, we'll have food vendors, don't forget your lawn chairs, and we will have vendors on site. So this Saturday, there is, I want to make mention, a five-dollar parking fee, so make sure you call pool, um, but we're super excited about that, um, as the season starts of our culture events, and I want to make more and more mention about the Arts for the Ages, that is next month under the direction of Deputy Director Morgan, this is our second year hosting the Arts for the Ages. If you didn't come out last year, make sure you come out this, uh, year to support Thursday, July the seventeenth, from ten to two, and that will be held at Costly Mill Park. And Arts for the Ages focus on generational youth, from our generational youth to our seniors, bringing our seniors and youth together to showcase dance, fashion, and art. Did I miss anything?
That was an awesome event last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was.
I mean, it was so cool.
And give us the date one more time.
Sure. The Arts for the Ages is Thursday, July seventeen, from ten to two at Costly Mill Event Center, and this is a free event as well. Light refreshments will be provided. But for any information, um, stay tuned to our social media accounts, we have everything posted, all of our events, and you can call our main number either at, uh, Johnson Park or Costly Mill.
And check out our digital brochure, that we have quarterly.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you. And what are the times for the concert Sunday?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, and that's at fourteen hundred Parker Road on the right side, opposite of the Tennis Center, so. Um, all right, and so do we have a need for executive session?
No, Madam Chair.
All right.